You're watching Cable 2.
Good evening and welcome to the Winston-Salem Forsyth County Board of Education's special called meeting for tonight, July 28th, 2021. I'm Shay Woodbury, Chair of the School Board. I'm going to officially call our meeting now to order. I think we have our board members here, so we do have a quorum. We have Board Member Parker online and also our Vice Chair, Cabaret Hayes, who is also online. Is there a motion to approve the agenda for tonight?
There's no further question or discussion. Let it be known by I for approval. Thank you.
The next item on our agenda tonight is, of course, the public comment on our one and only agenda item tonight, which is about the wearing of masks in our schools for the upcoming 2021-2022 school year. So we have quite a few people tonight to make comments. And I said, you know, only when children are involved do you see adults come together in such a loving and caring way, because we all have in common the love for children, the children that are in our community that will, you know, one day take over our community. So that's why definitely we are concerned just as neighborly people in Winston-Salem Forsyth County. I want you to know that no matter where this board lands tonight as relates to our vote, this is something that I actually saw, I think, on television. I think this is a great phrase that pays. "We love you, and it ain't a doggone thing you can do about it." So we, after tonight, we love you, we care about our children, we care about everybody in this community. So we just really want to work together to make sure that our children have the best education possible. And we really, really want to thank you for all of your emails and all of the phone calls and your presence tonight. I think this is just a great show of what happens when our community comes together on behalf of the greatest cause, which is, I think, the future of our children. So what I will say tonight is that because we have quite a few of you that have signed up tonight, we will have a minute of comments per person. And I appreciate your patience tonight as we have just a minute instead of the three minutes. But again, we are still reading emails, we are still accepting phone calls. Please invite us to any community forums. We would love to come out as board members to have more of a relaxed conversation instead of in the stringent, you know, mode of the school board meetings. So there are multiple ways that our voices can be heard and that we can hear one another with compassion and love, just so that we can make sure that we're doing the right thing for our children. So I'll go ahead and get us started. First, we have Mr. Al Jabbar. And what I'm going to do is I'm going to call up five people at a time. And if you can just space yourself like two or three feet apart, that will help. So we have Mr. Al Jabbar, then Ken Raymond, Anita Moody, Frankie Petrie, and Lisa Branson. So you will have one minute. I think we all know generally, I will say, just to, you know, please be considerate, that we don't discuss any personal issues involving our students or any of our staff meeting members. Also, just know that you would direct your comments to myself, the chair. We do not respond. But definitely, we have plenty of staff folk in here tonight. So if you need a question answered, we will definitely have one of our staff people attend to your question. And as, you know, always, we just ask you to be considerate and kind, and we definitely will reciprocate. So first, Mr. Al Jabbar, thank you.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I'm Shay Woodbury, Board Members, I'm student, chairman of the Republican Party. You know, I wonder why I'm standing here, actually, because it's the safe thing to do, to have a mask, see where we go from, say, 10 weeks, and then we evaluate. I'm very concerned. And given how it got away did last night, I'm concerned when we say we love our children, we say we love our teachers, but yet we stand in opposition when it comes down to a mask. I don't know how many of you have lost family members to this COVID situation. I would hate to see one of our kids or one of our teachers that we would lose them because we get caught in a mask. A mask, a mask. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Jabbar. Next, we have Kim Raymond.
Good evening, Board Members. My name's Ken Raymond, and I'm Chairman of the Forsyth County Republican Party. I'm not going to stand here and pretend that those among you on this board that pretend to hate are too far left side of the law to be part of listening to me. I know that you're not. So I'm not going to play that game. Anyone that knows me knows that I don't play games. I'm simply here to make a statement to the far leftists on this board, that we do support this mask mandate for children, and I expect that you will, you will lose your seat on the school board next year. I'm saying that as a concerned citizen, and I'm saying that as Chairman of Forsyth County Republican Party. I don't care which district you live in, which party Winston-Salem you present, you will be swept off of this board. You will be swept off the board. We will replace you with individuals that actually care about the proper education of children. You will be replaced with individuals who want our children to grow up living in a place in peace, living in peace, with people of all races. And to everyone in attendance and everyone listening to me, my name's Ken Raymond, and I can be found at ForsythCountyBoardroom.com. Let's get it out.
Thank you. What I will ask, in all sincerity, is that, you know, we hold our applause to the end so that we can try to stay focused. And that's just in all due respect. I'm, you know, trying to be sincere until the end so that we can try to get as many people in and move the meeting forward. So I appreciate, you know, your patience. But at the end, we're going to all stand up and give each other a round of applause, I promise. Yes, ma'am. Yes.
Madam Chairman and Board Members, how did this mask turn to dominate our daily lives? Masks have become a contentious symbol of our battle with SARS, COVID, and the diseases it causes, COVID-19. But how dangerous is this virus? Based on studies from Stanford University, we now know that we are dealing with a virus that has an infection fatality rate, or IFR, that compares to the IFR of most influenza viruses, and even lower. And yet the drapene and massive reactions to SARS have never been employed during the influenza season. Given this knowledge, it's more than perplexing as to why you, as publicly elected officials, would want to force healthy children or adults to wear masks. The science behind forcing children to wear masks is similar to conventional wisdom that abounds in nutritional science, that breakfast is your most important meal, or that grains should comprise the bulk of your daily consumption. In summary, whatever arguments there may be for consenting adults, children should not be required to wear masks to prevent the spread of COVID-19.
Thank you, Ms. Moody.
Your risk is not attainable. Thank you very much.
Ms. Petrie is up next. Thank you.
Well, I am all for not mandating the mask. Reason B, you cannot read lips if a mask is on. There are numerous partook children in our system. If you mandate the mask, then I suggest or we request that you purchase for every staff member and every student in our system, the mask with a clear view over their mouth. It is important for children to see each other's smiles, their teeth, their lips, to learn to recognize what people look like. But better yet, it's easier to read lips. Then the next thing is RSV is quite present. With the constant wearing of masks, that generates where they're breathing in, all of this back in, and it's causing bacteria in their lungs, and they will end up in the hospital more and more with RSV, not COVID, but RSV. It is very serious as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Lisa Branson.
Thank you for letting me speak. I'm a single mother of two. My oldest is in 10th grade this year, and the other will be an eighth grader. I believe that mask-wearing should be an individual choice, but I'll focus on the dilemma of masking or not masking high school students. The governor's strong recommendation for unvaccinated students to wear masks indoors would separate our seats into two groups, and this would be crazy stage. On one side, you have the vaccinated, no mask, which is good and clearly rewarded. On the other side, you have the unvaccinated, required to wear masks, which would be perceived as bad, and publicly called out, and made these students in high school who already are under peer pressure to be further pressured. This is a scarlet letter. It would divide, it would single students out, and until these unvaccinated students could feel pressure or pressure their parents into doing this, would this be an end goal?
Thank you, Ms. Branson. The next five people will be John Richardson, Colleen Lopina, Joe Frazier, Stephen Hefner, and Justin Green. And as those folk are coming up, I do have an announcement from our communications team that we just need the audience to know that watching online and on our Winston-Salem Forsyth County Schools Cable 2 channel, it's undergoing, of course, some major upgrades and renovations. And due to those upgrades, the quality of tonight's broadcast will be noticeably different and not what we are definitely used to. Of course, we apologize. However, moving forward, the new upgrades will allow for HD quality broadcasts, better audio, and an overall much better viewing experience. So we appreciate your patience and thank you for understanding why the broadcast looks different tonight as we make major changes for the upcoming school year. So thank you for allowing me to interject that. Mr. Richardson.
Thank you.
Yes.
The data clearly shows that this virus is not a danger to our children. Young adults and children are not effective spreaders of this virus and do not have to return with it. Get to some data. Someone mentioned the infection tail. Of those under 18, it's .00 or .003 or lower, meaning that the survival rate, if contracted, is 99.997 percent. According to the CDC, since May 30th, North Carolina has had a single-digit average daily death rate, a single digit. In the last two weeks, it's been under five deaths, under five deaths per day. The trend is downward. So children have a great immune system, and that seems, they seem better equipped, honestly, than adults. So let's let that natural immunity really take hold so that we can get rid of this virus for everyone. Forcing masks on our kids is creating more psychological, mental, and psychological damage.
Thank you, Mr. Richardson.
Thank you.
Ms. Lopina.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I'm the mother of a junior and a freshman. I'm asking you to allow parents to decide whether or not their child should wear a mask to school. The most important factor we need to consider about COVID is the death rate. Thankfully, the death rate in the U.S. has dropped dramatically over the past couple months due to vaccinations. The CDC is reporting a current U.S. COVID weekly death rate of 223 people. We must remember that each week, over 28,350 Americans die from cardiovascular disease, cancer, and car accidents. A Johns Hopkins epidemiologist recently stated, quote, "I haven't seen data to make me particularly worried about Delta in kids." If mask-wearing is so important for students' health, why were there zero COVID deaths of Swedish children when there were no mask mandates for them and schools were never closed in Sweden?
Thank you.
Please let parents know.
Thank you, Mr. Branson. Joe Frazier.
I'm about David, I mean Robert Capice to speak for me. Thank you.
Yes.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Robert Capice, thank you for your time. A couple things about mask mandates. I think we've had a year and a half to debate it. I find that to now push, I guess, before school starts, that this is tantamount to bullying, I think that lies in the face of any bullying campaigns that we have had successful execution throughout the past decade. I also find that the wearing of cloth over your face would seriously undermine the social-emotional learning aspect, as 80% of learning comes from visual. If you can't see their face, how are you going to know? The castle SEL program outlines several topics that definitely show that this interaction needs to occur, and cloth would prove to overcome, I think, it will do that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Stephen Hefner.
Good evening. My name is Stephen Hefner, and I'm a family physician and parent of a rising kindergarten in the district. While I look towards the day when we no longer need the mask for children and ourselves, that may as not today. The Delta variant of COVID, which is much more transmissible this year, while it is true that young children tend to only suffer mild illness from COVID, that is not true of all children. There are many students in the district who suffer from chronic medical conditions that increase their risk from a COVID infection. These conditions can include asthma, diabetes, and cystic fibrosis, among others. Children need to be in school, that is where they learn best. Without mandatory masking of unvaccinated students, COVID will spread. Absenteeism will be high due to the need for infected students to isolate, and for exposed students to quarantine at home after each exposure. For any student who has exposed to COVID multiple times throughout the year, the time away from school, the quarantine could be devastating for their education and health. Our children need to be in school. Masking is currently a best way we have to ensure safety for this fall.
Thank you, Ms. Hefner. Next, we have Justin Green.
Hello, I'm Justin Green. I'm the proud parent of two students at Wiley Middle School and also an active volunteer in almost all the high schools for their day teams. I wanted to say two things. One is that the CDC, which is our biggest conglomeration of public policy scientists, made very clear recommendations. They said this Delta variant is so dangerous that we have no choice but to mask, in quotes.
Excuse me, people. So that's disrespectful. Pull it back to one minute. What I will ask is that we have to model for our children what we want them to be. And although this is a very stressful situation for all of us, I think if we show each other respect, we'll be that much better off. So I will ask that as each person come up, we give them the respect that we've shown everyone prior, even if it's something that we totally disagree. So we'll start the clock back over and we'll let you start again, Mr. Green. Thank you.
I'll just continue from there.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Chair Woodbury. Part of the reason I am here today is because of that laughter. It's not recognition of what the science is born out to be. We could quote different abstract scientists who aren't part of the mainstream to try to demonstrate this isn't very harmful. I could then cherry pick those arguments and present those to you. But the fact is, the best scientists in our nation got together and said, what we need to do right now, even for us in this room, is to mask. The Delta variant is so dangerous that it can spread, and it is spreadable amongst individuals. I saw a bunch of signs about choice. The truth is, our students don't have free choice in schools. They have to follow dress codes. They have to follow safety protocols. And in this instance, we have to make the proper choice to privilege life, which is to make sure that we don't spread the disease further. Thank you, Woodbury.
Thank you. The next five people we have are Sarah Snyder, Rachel Dargis, Karen, and I'm Karen Larrabee, I think, and I'll make sure you can correct me when you come up, Val Young, and Nikia Reed. Yes, ma'am.
Hey, Chair Woodbury. My name is Sarah Snyder. I have two kids at Wiley Middle School, and I think that, you know, the science is clear on this. The CDC, the American Academy of Pediatrics, our local health officials, Dr. All, Joshua Swift, have all recommended that we have masking in school. And I think that this notion, that argument people are advancing, that, oh, well, kids all summer, they've been able to do everything unmasked, that's actually not true. The guidance is that unvaccinated people should be wearing masks indoors at all times. Because people are abusing the honor system, it's not a justification for us not to mask in school. And quite frankly, the kids are much more comfortable wearing masks, and they're much more adaptable and adaptable to it than many people think. The science is clear. I appreciate all of y'all's work and all the dedication. I want my kids in school all year, five days a week this year, and I think masking is the way to direct the target.
Thank you. Rachel Dargis.
Good evening, and thank you for allowing me the opportunity to speak. I have a doctor in physical therapy and three young children who I hope will attend from the elementary this year. As a healthcare provider who uses evidence-based treatments daily, I have always been taught critically analyzed data and new research should guide my treatments and procedures. I would like to ask you to do the same. Statistically, our children are at the lowest risk of suffering harm from COVID. In fact, the CDC states that most children with COVID have mild or no symptoms at all. Children are also statistically not shown to be spreaders of COVID. Did you know that in the fall of 2020, 11 school districts here in North Carolina, with more than 90,000 students and staff, were open for in-person education for a nine-week period, and there were no cases of student-to-student transmission? Even the CDC states, and I quote, "The general public should be educated about mask use because cloth masks may give users a false sense of protection because there is limited protection against acquired infection."
Thank you, Ms. Dargis.
Thank you.
Next, we have Carol Larrabee.
Hi, I'm Carol Larrabee. I'm one of the sandwich generation who have elderly parents that I'm taking care of and a child at school. My 88-year-old father passed away last year after six-plus visits to the ER, and he was after, which he was finally accepted into the hospitals. COVID protocols made that a freaking lot of an absolute clear. And subsequently, I made sure that my child was going to virtual academy, because I didn't want to take any chances. And I don't want to go back. I don't want to get out. Those days were horrible. And I think the best way to move forward is to have a year-long decision that we're going to wear masks in class. That way, we don't have to do social distancing. And how many, how many people had COVID last year? We had zero.
Thank you, Ms. Larrabee. Next, we have Val Young.
Good evening, Board Chair Woodbury, Board Members, superintendents, madam. My name's Val Young. I'm president of the Forsyth County Association of Institutees. First, I would like to say that none of us would believe that we are here again for COVID-19, perhaps not long away. The CDC and the other strong school too, cookie, and the Mid-Atlantic Academy of Pediatrics have heard that kids in high school wear masks in size buildings, and that non-vaccinated students, ninth, ninth to 12th grade, that they also wear masks inside. And that's a start to a being safe. But I would like for us to be proactive instead of reactive, and have a mask mandate for all students, not just us. We need to listen to the experts as we follow their direction for masking up, which keeps us safe and thriving in school, with you. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Val Young. Oh, sorry. Nikia Reed. Thank you.
Yes, please, but that's okay.
Okay.
As a school board member, you don't know the mental health of each and every child. You don't know if having a mask over their face is causing suicidal thoughts, causing depression, causing anxiety, causing lack of motivation, or lack of care. So why do you get to tell me or any of these parents that our child must be masked? How many of you will wear the mask nine hours a day, Monday through Friday, while the kids are in school? I will guess that not a few, maybe two, maybe two of you. I think for each of you sitting up there who already know that they will go up mandates just because it's what your political affiliation tells you to do, then you should have to wear the mask for the entire duration like the kids. Keep it over your mouth and nose all day and see how you feel at the end of the day. And oh, by the way, don't touch your face. See if you feel anxious or disconnected from those around you, because you can't see their facial expressions or really hear the words they're speaking. See if you can get a headache or feel a bit lethargic. And remember, if you are feeling that as an adult, the children are absolutely feeling that. Because the way I see it, if you don't allow parents to choose, then you shouldn't get to choose. Thank you.
Thank you. The next five folk are Rod Swain, Nate Frame, Margaret Carter, and Emily Saunders. So before Mr. Swain comes up, you can come on up, Mr. Swain. Thank you, sir. You know, so this is the people's space, and I want to make sure I acknowledge that. We've already laid the groundwork that we love each other and ain't a doggone thing we can do about it, right? So we know that. So there's no need for us to get too excited beyond that. But I really just want each and every one of us to just be held accountable right now to trying to move through this meeting as best that we can so that our staff can be ready to make the appropriate decisions, no matter where this board lands, so that we can be ready for our children day one. And that's why we had to have a special called meeting, because it could not wait until we came back in August. So I appreciate, as I'm trying to, you know, really think through, the clapping of the hands just mean, hey, I appreciate this person getting up, being brave before this board, and, you know, I want to applaud them. But I will ask that we take on some just accountability of, let's try to get through this meeting, and maybe it's more of a soft clap than it is a long clap, and it slows us down, per se. But I want to put that out there, and let's just, you know, be mindful of it. But this is our space, and I hope that we can all respect that. So, Mr. Swain, you're up.
Board Members, I have no idea what I'm speaking. I emailed each one of you, so I'll come and listen, and I'll be sure of having no idea what I'm speaking. Many of you could vote for me. More your opinion much better than me. Real quick, I'll say two things. Children are not spreaders. I know probably seven of them turned me off right there. There's no danger to the teacher and the staff. If there were, I wouldn't be speaking here. I love teachers. My two girls, that's the only name, Abraham and Abby, come in late in life. I was blessed with two beautiful girls. And that's my concern. They're just my life. But teachers are, so I believe teachers are wonderful. And I'm concerned about their health, the administration. But I don't believe children to be masked. It's unhealthy. Fifty definitely. With that said, I'll sit down. Of course, you don't have to say. That's all I got to say.
Yes, sir. Thank you. Mr. Frame.
Chief of the Appurtenance State. Last fall, I had an unpleasant experience taking my two kids on an airplane, and I got to witness the terror and the fear they had as the airplane stewardess was harassing them for not keeping their mask on. My kids are two and four, and one is getting ready to go to kindergarten very soon. And I had some deep concerns about my son having to go through a version of that experience every day, and he goes off to school and without me there to comfort him. I'm not sure if it's worth it. You guys love to require a mask on something like at the private school. The only regret I'll have is I won't receive it. This time, I'm not a property tax officer, so I won't receive it. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Margaret Carter.
Chair Woodbury, others, thank you for allowing me to speak. I'm Margaret Carter. I'm a semi-retired scientist and all of this. I like to keep up with things. I'm so glad that God would approve of this. I think it affects us and is here because it's great to have an infectious disease that's reckless. And it seems to me that we often, between hearing the news and other reports, blend statistics on health and pride in children. It's been reiterated many times here at the meeting that the children's risk is much, much, much lower. Thinking about all this, could we consider a middle-of-the-road approach, an optional mask with a strong recommendation to parents that all adults in the household, all eligible adults, please, please do that?
Thank you, Dr. Carter. Emily Saunders.
Good evening. My name is Emily Saunders, and I'm here to speak on behalf of renowned retired local pediatrician, Dr. Rose Ravenall, who is unable to be here this evening. There is a handout available which summarizes Dr. Ravenall's 1,400 hours of research during his retirement during his retirement during the COVID pandemic. This is his statement. I am a retired pediatrician after 37 years' practice and 11 years of academic pediatrics. I've read about 1,400 hours over the past year studying all aspects of the COVID pandemic. I urge you, school board members, in the strongest manner to avoid any form of face mask mandate for children during the upcoming academic year. In that handout that I've provided, Dr. Rabinal debunks the 22 studies that were provided by the Cooper administration that supported his mandate. I urge you to consider the handout that you have available to you and to consider Dr. Rabinal's request.
Thank you. The next five people are Apollo Ruiz, Melissa Paulson, Ashley Wallace, Kristy Adams, and Suzie Stany. And please correct me when you come up if I mispronounce your name. Yes, you go ahead.
My name is Paula Lewis. I am the parent of a five-year-old who arrived in kindergarten in a public school system. Last year, he went to pre-K in a public school system as well, and he adapted very well quickly to the great protocol that his school system put in place to keep him safe. He wore a mask, he follows sanitation and social distancing. This year, I'm here to ask and to request, same thing, sorry. That we keep our children safe, that we put in place sanitation protocols, and consider what the signs have for us to review and consider, which is that children wear masks indoors since they're not vaccinated. My child is five. I want him to have fun in his first year of kindergarten, enjoy his time there, and to be able to be there the whole entire school year. And wearing a mask until we figure out what the heck we can do to keep everyone safe is what's necessary, then that's what I urge. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Melissa Paulson.
Good evening. I'm Melissa Paulson. Thank you for allowing me to speak tonight. I'm the parent of two children, two third graders in the school district, and I would urge the board to require masks in schools. I hear people in the audience, you know, picking studies and different doctors and whatever to support their view, but the fortunate thing is that none of you have to make this decision. You know, you don't have to analyze the science, you don't have to have a medical degree, because we have excellent agencies doing that on our behalf. CDC, American Academy, Academy of Pediatrics, and North Carolina Department of Health all recommend mask-wearing indoors in schools for children. You know, we were successful last year, the school district was successful last year in preventing COVID-19 outbreaks in our schools with the mask requirement requirement. So, you know, we've got the Delta variant now putting a greater part to young people and to everybody, so let's keep our kids safe and healthy and keep them out of school.
Thank you. Ms. Wallace.
Good evening. Here we go again. We spent all of last year asking for a choice, a choice to send our kids back to school to get the education that they deserve. We had to fight way too long, and our children had to lose way too much before they were finally able to return to school. Something that they should have never lost in the first place. We can never give that time back to them. Now, here we go again, just asking for a choice. A choice for students and teachers to decide if wearing a mask is best for them. I've had many teachers that have reached out to me that want masks optional, that are too afraid to speak up. Majority of the people who are fighting so hard to keep our children masked are the same people who fought so hard to keep our kids out of school. They are the same ones that said last year that masks won't work in school and that so many would get sick and die if our kids were allowed back. I'm not asking for your ban on masks. I'm asking for a choice, a choice for parents to decide what's best for their families. Let us have that right. 17 counties have already done it, make masks optional. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Next, we have Kristy Adams.
Thank you for having me here tonight. I just, I'm a registered nurse and I'm a mom of two elementary school children. I'm begging you to please require our children to wear masks in classrooms. I have a child who has asthma, and that concerns me a lot. I know he can wear his mask, but it works much better if everyone is wearing masks to protect him. Please listen to the CDC guidelines that have been established. Also, I don't know if you're going to believe this, but last year, both my children tried school, neither of them complained at all about having to wear them. It's just a part of their day, it's just what they do. They actually wear it outside when it's like they're friends in their neighborhood, no complaints at all. My one son actually feels so much safer living on. So I just would really like you to please, both the students, to wear masks. And it's not a permanent thing, this is just temporary, just one student, for people and lots of students.
Excuse me. Thank you. Ms. Stany.
Good evening. My name is Suzie Stany. I'd like to begin with an excerpt from the Declaration of Independence that we all should know. "We hope these truths to be self-evident, that all men are created equal, that they are endowed by their Creator with certain unalienable rights, that among these are life, liberty, and the pursuit of happiness; that to secure these rights," pardon me, as the mic comes up, "governments are instituted among men deriving their just powers from the consent of the governed. The school board is the government. We are the government. You derive your power from us, the people. You act on our behalf. You are not here to serve a party or other institution. With that knowledge and the outpouring of support for unmasking our children, we do not give you consent to place any mandate of masks, experimental, non-FDA-approved injections or testing on our children. These are medical decisions that should be made by parents and their children, not the school board. The Declaration of Independence was written in a time in our history when Americans were being bullied by tyrants, forced to do things against their will and against their own judgment.
Thank you, Ms. Stany.
I would ask that you just not mask our kids."
Thank you. The next five people we have are Yvonne Williams, Beth Bean, Holly Cartwright, David Cartwright, and Chase O'Brien.
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name's Yvonne Williams. I'm the president of the Winston-Salem Forsyth County Retired School Personnel. I'm speaking as an individual. The Winston-Salem Journal this morning had an editorial. It was entitled, "Do What's Best For The Children." The subject of the editorial was a very important vote that you all will make tonight regarding whether or not to require the wearing of masks for K-8 students. We are a public school system. It's our job not to only make sure that our students receive the best education possible, but it's our job to protect them as well. The number of diagnoses of patients, of students, or not students, patients who have been diagnosed with the Delta variant has greatly increased in the last week. So I'm asking you for two things tonight. Number one, please vote yes, first of all, to require that K-8 students, faculty, and staff be required to wear a mask while in school buildings. Number two, consider the fact that be proactive and ask students to, high school students, be required.
Thank you. Excuse me, no one has the right to dismiss the person that's at the stadium except the chair of the board, so I would appreciate not doing that. Thank you. Is this Ms. Bean? Thank you.
Hi, my name is Beth Bean, and the paper was speech that I've cut up and chopped up so many times, and I'm not even going to read it because everything has been said that I already believe and feel to be true. I just want to ask you to show me the science. Please show me the science that a mask can contain the spread of a virus. I found 47 studies today, 47, that say impossible. The nanoparticles are too small. A paper mask, a piece of fabric cannot contain a virus as dangerous and potent and deadly as COVID. It's not going to happen. And aside from that, there have been 32 studies I found today that talk about the negative impact of wearing masks, not the reason of which is impeded breathing. How are our children going to learn if they can't breathe? Their brain needs oxygen. I'm begging you to please reconsider this and take into consideration that this is setting a dangerous, dangerous precedent for what the government can do.
Thank you, Ms. Stany. Next, we have Holly Cartwright.
As a mom of five children, I recognize the importance of social interaction and smiles. I've seen how smiles can produce love, friendship, and joy, and joy produces happy and productive children who thrive in school. Wearing masks and distancing recently significant decline in mental health in both young and old, and we must stop this peak decline. Let our children show their smiles. Let our children breathe. We've also seen numerous articles of kids passing out to do athletic sports, P E, read a plane on an outside playground from a lack of oxygen and overheating while wearing a mask. This is a healthy and our bodies need full access to fresh air. By wearing masks, we are creating our own personal sauna for our mouths, breathing in hot, wet breath. I, um, this is about education, and our children cannot hear or be heard as well while wearing a mask, and it hears their learning and distracts them while they're fighting with uncomfortable masks. I have the same information and access to statistics that can do. I can see the risk associated with COVID in our children and not masking them, but I believe their mental and social emotional health is far more important.
Thank you, Ms. Cartwright. David Cartwright.
My name is David Cart. I'm here with my wife and five daughters. I want to voice my concern along with millions of other Americans across the country with regards to the idea of having to continue to force our children to wear masks in school. We're now a year and a half into this pandemic, and everything we've been told that works has been shown does not work, or at least be far less effective. We were originally told to social distance six feet, and it was three feet, then masks were necessary, but then the order, then we're told the absurd thing of wearing two and three masks. Then the vaccines were distributed, and we're told that if you're fully vaccinated, you don't need to wear a mask because of how effective they are, so on and so forth. But I personally believe that it's not only physically for our children, but also their mental health. This has been widely ignored, but the mental health of our children across the country has been greatly impacted. Now you have study after study coming out showing that masking children for long periods of time is causing social isolation, little to no interest in human connection. It's also causing our children to be paranoid or flu-like illness, has a 99% recovery for adults and literally 100% recovery rate. The children have little to no symptoms from it. The parents, that's all I got to say.
Thank you, Ms. Cartwright.
I'm Chase O'Brien. We need, uh, eight of the board. Need to have an audience participation on this. How many of you have somebody pass away from a drunk driving? How many of you have somebody pass away from a mortgage? How many of you have somebody pass away from a driving? How many people have somebody pass away from a drunk driver? All right, so that's my science, so you can see science. That's observation. My mother died from COVID. Okay? She wore a mask. She washed her hands. All right? She died. She was put in the hospital, and she died because she had pulmonary issues before she ever got COVID. She wore a mask. My daughter wore a mask, and invited her back to school in February. We'd get to class with their mask on, people caught COVID, went all over the class, sent them home for a month. Masks don't work.
Thank you, Ms. O'Brien. The last three people we have tonight are Tiffany O'Donnell, Abby Allen, and Hank Allen.
Hi, my name is Tiffany O'Donnell. I'm here with my four children today, three who are in Forsyth County School. And I am asking for masks to be optional. I have a whole bunch of data, a whole bunch of data here, but at the end of the day, these are my kids. These are my kids. They're not your kids. It's my job to protect them. It is my job to protect my kids, even if it comes to protecting them from you guys. If you are telling them to mask, let me tell you what. The virus is so small that it passes through the mask. The virus, I have, I have data sitting here that the flu, on the CDC website, that masks do not help at all with the flu. There are 10 randomized studies. All the data says it didn't help with the flu. Guess what? COVID is smaller than the flu. Don't mask my kids. Mold gets caught in masks. Toxins get caught in masks. Yeast gets caught in masks. There's more danger in masking my kids than not masking them. I have to protect them from going to school and start a co-op community for homeschooling. I'm going to have to do it.
Thank you, Ms. O'Donnell.
Uh, there's something coming around for each of you, some data I've collected and have, that is previous to proof of purpose.
My name is Abby Allen. I'm a graduate and former teacher with this district. When my youngest child graduates, I will have been a parent in this district for 28 years. Wearing masks will have learning impact on roughly 15% to 20% of the students being served in our district. The district's strategic plan says that closing the achievement gap is a priority. Our teachers received Psyop training paid for by Title III money. They were taught that total physical response, which is the use of gestures and facial expressions to help convey meaning, is critical for language acquisition. Our EL students lost a year of face-to-face immersion. If you wear, if required to wear masks, they will get even further behind. Those with speech deficits will also suffer since they will not be able to see how sounds and words are formed with a lift in tongue. Students on the spectrum will not be able to receive valuable facial cues for their social deficits. Facial expressions are extremely important in helping all students develop emotional intelligence. I have provided you with the information to back up what I'm saying, and I request that you not make masks mandatory. Um, I also want you to make this forum accessible so that my son can have.
We're going to have the microphone, but your point well taken. Thank you. Yes, ma'am. And I would just like to let you know that right now, I think Jonathan Wilson is trying to determine where we are with. So ideally, if you have any materials for security's sake, just give it to our attorney, Ms. Jenkins, and then they will bring those materials up to the board. So I just wanted to let you all know that I think that's why Jonathan Wilson came in because we were kind of out of protocol, but no worries. So I think next we have Hank Allen. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Hank Allen. I'm a student of West Forsyth High School. I'm concerned about forcing masks on or unvaccinated students only. This is essentially labeling and segregation of students. It is wrong, and I believe it will also taint the way some teachers will respond to students. I've spent summer socializing with friends without masks. Since I'm a quadriplegic, I don't get out much, and my friends have visited my home in close contact all summer. We've all been healthy and happy, which has helped me especially adapt to my new injury. I trust my parents to make medical decisions for me since I'm a minor, and I think that mandating masks is overreaching for the school board. I'm requesting that masks be optional for those who want them.
Hank, I just want you to know on behalf of the board, we really appreciate your voice as a student. It takes a lot of courage to come up and speak to the board, and especially with the audience we have tonight, so just know that we have high regard for you coming in and telling us what your opinion is about this. Thank you so much. That was a great reason to clap for our students, right? We're going to get this, get through this together. The next item on our agenda is actually the one discussion item by our superintendent, Tricia McManus, the COVID-19 and return to school update.
Thank you. Chair Woodbury, board members, I'm just going to go through a couple of slides. I actually am probably going to skip most of them because I think there's one main one that is going to really just guide the recommendation that my staff is making to the Board of Education this evening. The others were just informational items. Let me see if this works. It does. First of all, I wanted to start by saying that it's great that this year we're not sitting here making decisions about returning kids to school because kids need to be in school. And so my recommendation tonight is going to be about kids being in school and not getting to a place like last year. And as much as we want to say masks didn't work last year, I don't know, maybe we may get it, but I will say what I do know about last year, and even last week, is that every time a student is a close contact, they have to stay home. So they go home, they have to stay home for 10 days. That's part of the guidance. It's still part of the guidance. Last week, even in summer program, I had to send kids that really need to be in school learning home because they were close contacts. So I'm saying that, the first couple of slides here are just that we are resuming transportation as normal. That's just for people to know because I still have a few questions about that. And then also vaccines. I was on a phone call yesterday with Joshua Swift from the Health Department and Dr. Olle, who represents the Health Department as our local epidemiologist. And right now, just so people know where we are with the vaccinations, I know that's a point of interest to folks, is that 29% of our 12 to 17-year-olds are fully vaccinated, 35% are partially vaccinated. The other information is information from cdc.gov. Here's the guidance. Most of you already know this because you've been mentioning this. The guidance we followed all last year is to drop kids back. And my goal the entire last year, my staff and my goal were to get kids back in our schools. And as we look at data, remote learning does not work, and so sending kids home for any period of time is not a good, is not a good idea. And so... And so they need to be in school learning with their teachers and with their peers. And as I visited summer programs this summer, amazing, the work that they were doing. I visited Freedom Schools, I visited our arts program at Whittaker, I visited so many schools, and the work that kids were doing was amazing. And so, and they were excited. I also even went to a Matilda, and trust me, I, I'm, just like everybody else here, is really tired of it. I'm tired of it too. And so are, so are my kids and so are my family, everyone is. But even in Matilda, the students all performed with their masks, and I was like, oh my gosh, I wish they didn't have to, but they did because that's still part of the guidance. And they did an amazing job. It was just an amazing performance. So I will say, all of the people that we listened to last year as we came back to school, which were, we didn't really, the American Academy of Pediatrics really wasn't one of our sources last year. It really was the Strong School Toolkit the entire year, the CDC, which is really what the toolkit was based on, the ABC Collaborative, which we've partnered with and many other districts have partnered with, and then Dr. Old and the Forsyth County Department of Public Health. And so those are still the folks that I have spoken to in the last couple of weeks, have met with, just to again, get their guidance, because that's what we did last year throughout the year to bring kids back into our buildings. And so here are their recommendations. I'm not gonna go through them. Everybody has been seeing all the recommendations and all the emails we've gotten, probably 400, I would say, in the last few days. And much appreciated and to see how people are feeling about this. This is where I want to share, as my staff and I have talked about it, because we've gone back and forth and back and forth, having deep conversations about what is the right thing to do for our children. We are committed to their academic and social, emotional, and physical health. That is what we're about. We have very strategic, rigorous goals to move the needle for all of our students. And so I will tell you on the left-hand side of this, we are going to have, we are gonna continue contact tracing. That's still part of the toolkit. We have to continue that. But I will say, this is what's new in the toolkit, and this is what's going to be the precursor to my recommendation slide, because I feel like my goal as a superintendent is to have students in school as much as possible. And it was very disruptive last year if any of our families had to either have their own child quarantined because they were a close contact or have an entire classroom quarantined. We have a lot of parents that had to go through that. A couple of times, it was almost, I think maybe three times the entire year, it was most of the school. And so I will say, in the new toolkit, and I'm not sure if everyone's read this, but if you are in a mask and you are close contact, you don't have to quarantine this year. That is a big difference that is in our toolkit. If you are wearing a mask, you do not have to quarantine this school year. And so that is in our North Carolina Strong Schools Toolkit. If the person next to you ends up being a positive case, just because you were in the classroom with them within three feet, you do not have to mask. You do not have to quarantine for 10 days. That is a change to our toolkit. And so honestly, that is the one and only change that is really, I'm not talking about spread, I'm not talking about science, I am not an epidemiologist. I listen to those that are. I am none of those things. All I am is a person that really cares about our kids. And so at the end of the day, because I want kids in school, because I don't wanna go back to where, you know, right now, we were at 13 cases a day in our Forsyth County of positive cases, just 13 a day. That's minimal of positive cases to 39 a day in two weeks. And the, the prediction is to keep going up and then come back down and be at a better place. More people are getting vaccinated, which Dr. Old, his biggest message to me when we spoke this week was, as more people get vaccinated, when that spike goes, it's coming back down. And he said, and this is not gonna be a forever thing. So my recommendation, and I know we'll go into discussion about it, the recommendation of my team, oops, not that, is that, that we approve the universal masking inside the buildings beginning August 2nd through the first quarter, just through the first quarter, and that we will review prior to starting second quarter. It will not be required outdoors, which means we would want kids getting outdoors frequently for mask breaks and getting those masks off. And it's also part of transportation, being on the transportation vehicles. So based on what we've learned from our, the experts that we've listened to for a year and a half around this, that allowed us to bring kids back safely and educate them, I wish it would've been all year, we want that to happen this year. They need to be in school. And so it's just the first quarter of a recommendation, which is follows the guidance we've been given from all of the experts that we communicate with regularly. So that is a recommendation of my staff.
Thank you. So I'm going to go ahead and call the motion and hopefully during the discussion and question part, that's when we can ask the superintendent the questions and make any comments as board members. So is there a motion to accept the recommendation?
I move that we accept the recommendation as given by the superintendent.
Any further question or discussion? Yes. Oh, I'm sorry, ladies, we already have done that. Sorry about that.
That's okay. I'm among this, you know, not, not right there with y'all, but I'd like to make a motion that we make this optional. It's important to be that I can.
We, we already, we already, board member Catherine, hey, we've already made the motion. Someone has already made the motion to accept the superintendent's recommendation. It has been seconded, so we are in question and discussion right now. But so, and that's just because you can't really hear what's going on. Yeah, it's a delay. Sorry about that. Go ahead. Go, go ahead. Okay. Go ahead.
I'm sorry, Ms. Mott. Okay, thank you. Um, so just a couple, I think a lot has been said, and Superintendent McManus, I appreciate your, you know, kinda cutting through a lot of the slides that people have already seen and kinda getting right to the, to the chase. My, my problem with this mandate is that it seems that we are, as a district, a little hypocritical and kinda talking, in my opinion, out of both sides of our mouth. And, you know, to me, if this were something that we knew we were going to recommend and then we're saying that this is so critical to keep school moving forward, then I wonder why we would bring top district adults, every principal and APs in the district and board members to a three-day in-person retreat where masks were optional. I mean, we did that.
So right, right, so here's what I'll say, you know, in a very authentic way, because I've, we've already established that this is a shared space. So right now, we are in the midst of, according to North Carolina Legislature, trying to take care of the business of the people, and so we need to stay focused. And I think when we have the cheering and caring and all, it does not allow us to stay focused so that we can hear one another and stay focused to make the best decision that we can. So I will ask again, please, hold your applause until the end of this session. Thank you.
I, I, you're right, Chair Woodbury. And I would just say, I, you know, I think a lot of you in this room agree with me, and that's great. But we also have to honor each other and the space to be in here. And I've also been in this room where disruptions for other things are tough. Chair Woodbury has a tough job to try to balance them. I sat in that seat for a few years, and it's not easy. And so, you know, let's be adults, and I think it is important to model respectable behavior that our kids can see. So I get, you know, you're excited, you're passionate for your kids, but let's have respect for the space and for the district.
Thank you, Board Member McDonnell.
Please do that. So again, I have questions as to what message are we really sending? Because if the importance is to keep us going, why would we not have said we're gonna mandate masks for key roles in our district? I don't understand that. I went and didn't have a mask on. Some did, and some, some folks have been masked the entire time. You see two board members here, Ms. Mott singer and Ms. Bramer. I do not agree with their take on, on how we've done this, but I respect them, that every time that there is a put the mask on, do something, they, they live what they're saying, right? And so you have to respect someone who does, that does that. I'm having a problem with our district because I don't see that we're doing that. Even when we had masks when kids came back, is this something for everyone? I think the lady that brought up the point of if we, if we vote for this, if we're doing this, are we gonna do it and we're gonna keep them on in the car, in the bathroom, don't shut the office door, wear them the whole time? Because our, our classroom teacher doesn't get to do that, nor do our students. And so if we're saying it's good for you, then are we doing that as well? I can, I can clearly say if Ms. Bramer and Ms. Mott singer vote to wear masks, they live that. I have to respect that. But I would say to myself and to others up here, when you're doing yoga, when you're exercising, when you're in the car, when you're doing whatever, even though your job may not require, are we gonna do that? Because that's what we're imposing on our kids, and if we believe that for them, are we really doing that? The other point I have, and I'll be quiet for now, but it's, it's hard for me, just like when we were talking about coming back into the building last year, it amazes me that we, we are such a, a great district with such talented people and resources, but we couldn't get our kids in the building quicker than a lot of districts last year. And again, already, Cabarrus, Caldwell, Catawba, Cleveland, Iredale Statesville, Lincoln, Rowan Salisbury, Union, and Stokes. Somehow they can do it with optional masks, and they feel like that they can still serve their students. And I don't understand why we in Winston-Salem Forsyth County don't feel like we can do it.
Board Member Mott singer.
I just wanted to address our superintendent. My understanding is that you've spoken to Dr. Christopher Old, not only recently concerning this, but all along, you've had an ongoing relationship. My understanding is that you also speak to Joshua Swift, who is the Forsyth County Department of Health Director, as well as guidance from Dr. Priest, who is at Novant Health. One of the things I will say, as somebody who's lived in this community for many, many years, is that Novant and Baptist Health and the Health Department have not actually always worked together in concert so consistently and well. And so it seems to me that given that the best infectious disease guidance we are getting is consistent across the board, that this is the best way to keep our children in school this year, to keep our community safer, and that the community actually has a way of getting preferred immunity through vaccination, at which point this is over for us. And so I just wanted to make sure that you have heard a consistent message from the best medical advice available to us. I would like to just say that I've practiced medicine for 30 years, and I have a master's degree in bioethics, and I believe that it's critically important to protect the vulnerable and that we have a way of doing that. I also believe we have a community that can step up and go ahead and create herd immunity as quickly as we want to, but that does require getting vaccinated. And until that happens, I want us to protect our children and I wanna protect our staff, and ultimately, I wanna protect the well-being of all of us. So thank you very much.
Board Member Bohannon, and then I will get Board Member Parker, and then Board Member Bramer.
Thank you, Chair Woodbury. Madam Superintendent, just a couple of questions. So first, throughout the summer, as we've been having summer programs with children, have children been, children and staff been required to don a mask when children are in our buildings? Is that the way? Do we have that in place right now?
Correct. And any adult visiting, going to a campus where there are students, need to be masked.
Okay. But it just hasn't been so like for, if it's all adults, then the mask isn't optional?
If it's all adults, just like everywhere else, masks are optional. Masks are optional, strongly encouraged, strongly recommended, which is what the message, if you are not vaccinated, correct?
But if you are vaccinated, the recommendation has been is okay?
It was so strongly recommended that it wasn't a requirement.
Right. And so question, a question about the changes of this year, when we ended last school year, we didn't have volunteers in schools, right? The expectation is that this year, we will start to allow volunteers to come into schools, right?
Correct.
And then in your conversations with Dr. Old, some of the other experts, the Department of Public Health, could you talk a little bit about their justification? Like have they, you know, you were, you were asking questions, you know, what are they concerned about that sort of makes them so, you know, in line and together on the recommendation for the mask?
That it's gonna be a way for us to actually be able to move forward and not have to shut down schools in general and not have to send children home. Same things that I actually based the recommendation that I made on is what they're concerned about.
Board Member Parker.
Um, I have a point of clarification. I'm sorry it's difficult to hear remotely sometimes. Was the recommendation for our students K through 8 or our students K through 12?
It was all K through 12.
Alright, thank you.
Board Member Bramer.
Um, I just wanted to make sure with Chat, my clarification.
I think your mic, make sure your mic.
It's on.
Okay.
I'm sorry, I haven't pulled down. Many of these recommendations, they came in this week, correct? They've been updated within the past two weeks.
I believe the toolkit was updated, was it last week, Dan, or?
July 21st? And then the CDC is yesterday?
And the CDC is yesterday.
So, I mean, I agree then that, you know, we have to put in practice, we have to preach, but we put what we preach, we have to put it in practice. But it was updated recently. The reason it's updated is the Delta variant is new. We don't have all of the information on it. So, I mean, I, I agree with the quarter continuing forward with the masks because we don't know what we're doing around the corner. I don't wanna close schools again. I don't wanna go over towards my kids again. I just don't want them moving in the house. So I'm excited about that. I really think that we need to just acknowledge, this is new. It's not that we are, we were expected to do this last week. This is new.
Thank you, Board Member Bramer. I think Board Member Crawley, and then Board Member.
Did you wanna respond to what she was saying?
No, you ladies haven't spoken. Don't hit them out there.
Board Member Catherine, then.
I have two questions. One is when we talk about herd immunity numbers, we're talking about numbers of people vaccinated, but I don't believe they're factoring in people who've had COVID and have the antibodies. So there, there's a difference there. To me, a mask mandate as a response is not justified by the numbers of cases or the severity of cases, especially as they apply to children at this time. So my question, Superintendent, is what other options were considered?
To what? I'm not, I don't understand your question.
To your, instead of a masking mandate, was there another consideration? Like when you looked at all the possible solutions for this and you landed on masking mandate, what was, what were the other options that were considered?
So.
I'm not, I wasn't trying to stump you, I'm sorry, but I just.
So the options around masking, again, were about that if you are sitting next to someone that ends up saying, oh, my mom, I was home, my mom got it at work, and now I have it. I was sitting next to you yesterday, we were both masked, I can still come to school. I am not having to stay home for any period of time if I have no symptoms. Now, if I get sick, I have to stay home. We don't have the same virtual option as last year. If a child goes home for two weeks, there is not a camera in the classroom for a virtual. The only virtual option this year is Virtual Academy. And so that is, that's the premise of my decision, and, and not mine, my entire team's decision, and as I spoke to the Health Department and others, that's it. So if there were another option that would include no masking and letting kids stay in school, I would be going with that one.
I guess I wanted to, did you all vet out considering optional masking or masking K8 and not high school, or what? I just wanna know what the options were.
The recommendation at secondary, and we've heard some folks talk today a little bit about the whole mask or not masking and what that could do, but the masking, it would be by the time school starts, if that one percentage of students gets a full vaccination between 12 and 17 years old, we'd have about 50% of students vaccinated. The recommendation from Dr. Old and the Health Department was after nine weeks, hope for. nine weeks, hopefully, as we make vaccines more readily available, because again, some folks may not have even been able to get vaccinated. And we, we tried to have clinics, we tried to bring it close to schools, we tried to make that possible. He says as more people are vaccinated, it will be, make it way easier for us to then, I mean, if we're at seventy, eighty percent of students in our, in our high schools, then we probably would not need to do masks at high school. Right now, it, it is not even at, I mean, it's not at fifty percent now, it'll end up being at fifty-two percent by the time we walk in the door for school.
Have we factored in how many kids have already had COVID?
I, no, I bet it, no, no.
I think that's the number we need to get, because we could.
I can get that from the Health Department.
Yeah.
I can get that from the Health Department.
Board Member Catherine?
Um, yes, thank you, Chair Woodbury. Um, I just want to go on the record to say, I don't like wearing masks. I am tired of masks. I, you know, my kids, all that. I was, was recently on vacation, I had to wear them everywhere. Um, yeah, so I get it. And I also get about personal choice. I understand that as well, I really do. Um, and it's hard, it's hard, you know, to weigh all of this, but I have also had numerous conversations with Dr. Old, and none of us up here are the experts, but we have to rely on the experts. And he, from the very beginning, has been a push for in-person learning. I mean, he did it in the very beginning when it wasn't even popular, and a lot of board members up here weren't happy with him. Uh, but he, he has that approach. He wants the kids to be in person. He wants, he, he knows that's the best way to learn. And so, here are the ways to do it. And this Delta variant is different, according to Dr. Old and others, of course. And he said that you're gonna start seeing some symptoms that are not like the other COVID symptoms. Any sore throat, any sniffle, any cough, is it gonna be COVID, is it the flu, is it a cold? We're gonna have to start figuring out how to increase testing, if this is the case, if the masks are not worn. Um, his goal is to obviously get the mask off as well, ultimately. Um, I mean, this is everybody's goal. And what he is saying, because he is the expert, let's start for a couple of months. He even said, let's start for a couple of months. I would even say, let's have more frequent conversations with them. Let's see how the trends go. Maybe we could even remove the mask earlier. We're not talking about whole year. I would not raise my hand for that. Um, but I think to start it off, because we're trying to get off on the best foot as, as possible, that we need to, uh, we need to listen to him, and we need to go with his recommendation.
Thank you, Board Member Catherine. Uh, Board Member Jones? Bo- Bo- no, no, sir. No, sir.
There was an accuracy in this line.
Um, Mr., sir, you're gonna have to, we're, right now, we're having a meeting, so we appreciate if we would not do that. If you have a question, someone, one of the staff people can help you. So, Board, Board Member Jones?
So I just wanted clarification on the motion, when the, um, I, I know we can't have this lineup, because we're bringing the, we have the people up. So, is this for, I'm assuming this is for the entire, entire district, all personnel, all, all day, and we're gonna say, from the time you're, whether you're driving in the district car, you're in your office with the door closed, this is for, this is for everyone. So what we're, what we're gonna impose upon our students, we're gonna do across the board to all staff. Is that, is that accurate?
The recommendations are all district buildings.
All district?
For, for the exact reason of, we're not going to ask our students to do something that we're not doing across the system.
Because I think we did a little, I think we did a little different last time. There were some, um, I, I think, you know, that, that, that some folks that were like in cubicles versus offices, and, and, um, we're, it was a, a different time, so I'm just making sure that what we're, what we're doing to the classroom, we're making sure we're doing that in operations, transportation, ev- everywhere. If, if you're in a building or in something, you've got to ask.
Inside a building. Outside, kids don't have to wear them either.
Got it. Thank you for the question.
Thank you. Board Member Bohannon?
So, I, I just had another question around, because that part in the toolkit about the quarantining was new to me, and so I just want to ask a clarification around it. So, this, that requirement for quarantining is not something that we as a board get to decide whether or not we do. We have to do, that's in place, we have to do that. So if I, as a parent, if I'm a parent, so my goddaughter is about to start kindergarten, she's five, if I send her to school without a mask, and someone in her classroom contracts COVID, because she wasn't wearing a mask, she now has to quarantine for ten days?
If it follows the, the, the quarantining guidelines, which is within six feet for fifteen minutes.
Right. And so.
Right? Would that be on the list of that, for quarantine guidance? Can you check me on that?
That's correct, if it's, um, if they weren't wearing masks, yes.
Okay, and so, with, if she was within six feet for fifteen minutes, and she doesn't have on a mask, and someone in that area contracts COVID, she then has to quarantine for ten days? That means she has to come home?
Yes.
So if I'm working a full-time job, like, I have to figure out how, what to, how to, like, I have to figure out somebody to keep her during the day?
Unfortunately.
But if I send her to school with a mask on, and somebody in her classroom contracts COVID within six feet, within fifteen minutes, as long as she has on a mask, she doesn't have to quarantine?
As long as both do. As long as they all do, and as long as she doesn't have symptoms.
As long as they all do.
And she doesn't get symptoms.
Okay.
As long as they're both, the person whom, whom she had contact with across the, as long as they're both wearing masks.
Okay, alright, thank you.
Board Member Calvert-Hayes? Yes. We see your hand up.
Um, okay, I, I can't hear very well, um, where I am here, but we've had so many of the parents to feel like that they're not being able to take a part in this. And that's why I suggested the optionals, because I've gotten so many, I mean, so many, and I know you have too, uh, emails with the parents wanting to feel like that they have a play in this, and feeling like that they don't, since we have a board that is voting on that. How would this play if the parents did have an option? Can someone give me some recommendation on that?
So if the parents had an option, so some kids would have a mask, some would not?
Yes. I know that, uh, in several of the counties, you know, they do have options. Could you give me how that would work in our school?
So.
They would have which one?
They would, they would have an option if, if they were a close contact, because we also know that students, once they leave school, are, you know, family members are not necessarily, I'm not gonna say all, because I'm not gonna generalize, uh, they might be doing other things where no one's masked, and there are chances that someone will still get COVID, a child. And so if they come back to school not knowing, if they're, you know, asymptomatic, or sitting next to another child that is unmasked, um, they're gonna have to quarantine. That, just like, I mean, just like last year, it, it would be the same, the same thing. If there are ten kids sitting in the area, and one is unmasked and one is masked, they all quarantine. If they are close contacts, and again, we're trying to get, one of the slides I'm gonna show is, our classrooms are gonna be set up again to be positive learning environments. Last year, when you walked into some, because of the guidance from the state, you, they were very, they were more sterile. You didn't have the rugs, and you, you weren't able to put kids at all in groups. Everything was rows and six feet apart, and, and things were very different. And I can see at that time, it wasn't the learning environment that students were, were used to, that, that would be hands-on. Even manipulatives were prepackaged, individual. I mean, those were all the guidelines we had to follow last year. That is not the case this year. We want kids to come back and to feel like, okay, this is my classroom. They can still have a carpet on the floor, they can sit on the carpet and read. They're not gonna be sitting at desks in rows. So the learning environment, we're trying to make that very positive for students. And I know some people think, well, that mask is going to take away from that. Um, the thing is, is I have, I'm, we're trying to weigh, my team and I, is the mask for nine weeks, what, what's the worst of the two? That for nine weeks and keeping kids in school, or having the quarantining constant? Because our kids are gonna be together. They're not six feet apart in classrooms. They're not three feet. They're, we're, we're not making anyone stay away. Everyone can come back, and they're gonna be sitting close to each other. So Lida, if, I mean, I'm sorry, Board Member Calvert-Hayes, if, um, if a child, if, if two kids are sitting next together, one is masked and one unmasked, one ends up being positive, then both students, you know, would quarantine. And anybody else that might be within six feet for more than fifteen minutes, it would follow the same guidance as last year. So again, that's what, that's what brought my team and I to that, to that decision. So, does that make sense, uh, Board Member Calvert-Hayes?
So are you saying that if they wear masks, and, and someone gets COVID in, in the classroom, then they do not have to quarantine for that, uh, length of time?
Correct. And I'm going to, Deon, can you reiterate that from the toolkit, because you've been studying it in depth, in depth as well?
Yes. According to the current toolkit, and this is for students only, if a student who's not vaccinated is considered a close contact with someone who is, um, confirmed positive for COVID, they will not have to quarantine if both individuals were wearing masks appropriately consistently. And so that is different from the previous versions of the toolkit. That's only if they're vaccinated?
That's if, that's if they're not, and our younger students cannot be. But then, do you want to, tell, tell, I didn't bring in staff with the toolkit, will you tell them what the toolkit says about staff?
Is, is that only if they are vaccinated?
So if an individual is vaccinated, they do not have to quarantine if they are close contacting someone who's tested positive for COVID. That, that's actually the rule that was existing prior to the most recent toolkit. If they are not vaccinated.
Well, we have, we have so many that are so young, they can't be quarantined. You know, they, they, they can't have the, um, the vaccination. Is that correct?
Right.
That's correct. That's correct. It's not eligible yet for children up until age, is it twelve?
Right. So, so that's quarantine, it is not covering all our kids, just the portion that are vaccinated, correct?
No, it's masked. It's the one, Lida?
It's the ones who are masked.
I look which can't be vaccinated.
Right. So if they are masked, and the other people in the classroom are masked, they do not need to be quarantined. But if they're not masked, then they do. And part of this is to avoid having to quarantine classrooms.
Okay, thank you for explaining that.
You're welcome.
Can I ask one?
Um, Crowley, I think had a question, and then we'll go right back to. Thank you for explaining though to Board Member Calvert-Hayes.
So it's about the same thing. I understand the masking part and quarantine. How does vaccination status affect quarantine, and how does, if you already had COVID, affect quarantine?
So if you have, if you are vaccinated, fully vaccinated, which is identified as being at least two weeks after your second dose of a two-dose, um, vaccine, or two weeks after your first dose of a one-dose vaccine, if you are considered fully vaccinated, and you have close contact with someone who's positive, you do not have to quarantine. Um, for individuals who have antibodies because of previously tested positive for COVID, um, I believe that if, uh, if my regulations are so incorrect, that they do not have to quarantine within the first three months after testing positive, but after that they do.
Board Member Mott singer.
Yeah. Uh, my understanding is that people end up with a stronger antibody response when they have been fully vaccinated than when they've had COVID. Um, but that is my understanding, and I am not a epidemiologist saying that that is factually true. My concern was that the change that has been happening at the level of the CDC about masking even for vaccinated people. So, obvious, I was fully vaccinated as early as I could, and I used to, I enjoy not wearing a mask. And unfortunately, the Delta variant appears to be much more contagious, and recently, the CDC once again recommended that even vaccinated people be, so, I think the very hard part is dealing with something that isn't the novel in our lifetime. We haven't experienced this before, because it doesn't happen that often. And the difficulty about medical practitioners of the science is that what you said a year ago should improve. Quite honestly, if people said exactly the same thing now that they said a year ago, it would be because they weren't learning. And they are learning. And I'm deeply concerned about the mental health of our children, as I have been for all fourteen years that I've served on the board. We have to hope our children can be resilient, and with our love and support, can develop some skills to get through this hard time. And I feel like we'll do it better if we do it together.
Thank you, Board Member Mott singer.
I've just had a question.
Okay, go ahead.
Um, Superintendent Manus, can you, um, I know that you, um, participate in large consortium superintendent calls, and then Keetac, which has so many of the smaller, um, groups. And, and I am just, I'm trying to, to understand maybe where, I understand the change in the toolkit with the quarantine. And I'm trying to understand, and maybe some of, of our, um, parents would as well, as to, you know, why we see so many school districts who have made the, the call to do masks that are optional, and, and why we felt like, and they have to go by that same guideline, and why we felt here that, that that was gonna be, I guess, problematic. So, did we have more cases in our schools last, you know, when we came back? Did we have to quarantine more than some of these other districts? Or, and I only ask that because I know that as superintendents, you all talk, and your staff talks, and so, was that, you know, was, was there some data that you looked at from our return, or even over summer, or, or something like that, that, that made you feel like we, as a district, were gonna really have problems if we left mask optional?
No. So the other districts, um, we have not been looking at each other's quarantining data last year. We did have high numbers of quarantines. We did not have high numbers of the school spread, which is why I kept saying, let's bring more kids back. It wasn't the, there was not a lot of student-to-student spread within a school, or even student-to-adult spread. Um, if, people were getting the virus outside of school, for the most part. So this, this decision was not about that. It, it is about quarantine. So you asked me, do we have more quarantines? I, I'm not sure. We, the, 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 um, all the districts haven't compared data, but I will say the larger districts, which is my one-week call, and then we do another one with the smaller districts, it's a very different conversation with the larger districts. It's, it's with, with CMS, and with Guilford, and with Wake, and with Cumberland, and, and there is a different conversation about what they're doing versus the rocking hands to some of the ones that you mentioned earlier. So I will say that, and you'll see over the next week, when most of the districts are having their meetings, I think you will see a trend of a similar recommendation coming from the larger districts with more students, um.
So for the urban areas versus the rural?
Correct. Correct. That, to me, is the pattern that I've seen, as I've been on my phone calls.
And.
Thank you.
Board Member Jones, um, just, I, I think that, you know, as a county, of course, you know, we have the, you know, we've been given the right to make this decision. And so, a- across this state, school districts making different decisions, which is why I think it, it just has sent a message to the state, um, that's kind of confusing, and maybe, you know, kind of have us at odds, if we could, you know, have, um, what I would say, more decisive, um, leadership from the state perspective. And so, you have some counties that are larger, and maybe some would consider, um, more urban versus the smaller rural areas making different decisions. For example, I know that CMS, Wake, um, and Guilford last night, um, Durham, making a decision to require masks. But I don't think that those decisions, um, mean that, oh, we're making the smarter decision because we're larger urban school districts, right? And that the other districts, you know, have, uh, uh, making a decision based on, well, you know, we have different science. You know, all of us, I think, as school districts, trying to make the best decision based on our community, based on the information that we're getting, based on the recommendation of our superintendent. So I do understand the frustration, um, with the counties trying to make these decisions, you know, um, and, and, and try to redo, you know, the best thing. But, you know, um, to your point, um, Board Member Jones, you know, it seems like the smaller districts are going, you know, in the direction of option versus the larger districts going in the direction of, of more required, um, decisions. So, Board Member Bohannon, I think you have a question, and then. So Board Member Bohannon, I think you have a question, and then I would like to move in the direction of calling the vote for the motion.
So, thank you, Chair Woburn. So to Board Member Kato Jones' question, I think that, as I was thinking about why some of these smaller districts were making this decision, um, that was something, that was a question that I had because I was like, if they're doing it, why can't we do it? And I think that, um, when I, when I've sort of asked some questions and done my research, I think a lot of it comes down to population density. Um, because like, for instance, in Rowan County, the, the actual county itself is about 511 square miles, but they have like 147,000 people. And then here in Forsyth County, we're like at 408 square miles, where we have 380,000 people. So I think, you know, for the larger urbans, um, it, it seems because the, the sort of risk is higher because our populations are higher, I think there may be, that, that's a concern for me, is sort of the correlation between the population density and, and sort of spread. And also, now Superintendent, this is something that, um, and, and I would just say, what's frustrating to me is, because I'm not an expert, it would be so much easier if we had, and we had experts here to be able to ask these questions. I mean, that was, that was something that, I know that there were those of us who would have liked to have, have happened, and I guess for scheduling or whatever reason, that couldn't, because we're asking you questions like, you're the expert, and that's not your area of expertise. And so I'm having to ask you about your conversations as opposed to asking someone who actually knows. Um, but I, to the question about the sort of safety of students who are wearing masks for prolonged periods of time and, and the sort of social emotional health of students while masking, in your conversations with the, the experts, did that come up? Are, are they, do they, have they addressed that with you?
I asked about that, um, just because I had seen a lot of emails with studies, like the ones we have tonight. Um, and again, these are epidemiologists, they're, and, and folks that, that study, um, disease and the, and the spread of disease. And, and they said that that, that information, they said it was incorrect. It was not, that, that was not founded. So again, if they would have agreed with the other studies and said that there's danger in wearing a mask, I mean, do, do, is it, do kids like wearing them? No. Is it hard to wear at times? Absolutely. Is it, do they need mask breaks? Yes. Um, but even this summer in the classes I went to, the kids were, the kids were so excited. I mean, they were doing arts and they were doing drumming and they were doing, at arts camp and all the other camps as well. And so to answer your question specifically, no, he said it was not harming people. Uh, one of the examples he said, I mean, and, and these are adults that wear them every day for a living, but he says there are medical professionals that wear them all day, every day. Um, and again, so, yes, I just, yes, I realize they're adults, that's why I kind of prefaced it with that. Um, but anyway, but there, again, the answer to me that I got from that was no.
So...
Well, I would have brought that up tonight.
So it, the way that it was, the, the recommendations and things that, that sort of were happening a couple of months ago and even kind of last fall, was that masking in and of itself wasn't, if you just wore masks, but you did wash your hands, you did socially distance, it had to be the things that were kind of all three together, where it sort of gave you the best chance. And because we're not doing the social distancing and if your recommendations do the mask, I'd like to ask questions around what other things we're going to be doing in addition to that. So, and I'm just gonna ask all these things for you to just answer. So I'm not going by, going one by one. Are we still, I know we're not taking the Wednesday to do the, the...
Right.
But what, what cleaning measures are we, are we doing? Are we still having the hand sanitizer stations in schools?
Yes.
Um, I mean, children will be getting in cafeterias together again, right? Um, are we, we know that because children are not going to have to be required to wear masks outdoors, are we being intentional about making sure that children get time outdoors so that they can not wear their masks?
So to answer all of your questions, so there will still be all of the, um, protocols for, for cleaning, for cleaning the buildings with our custodians. It will just happen daily with extensive cleaning of the classrooms. There will still be cleaning in between classrooms in, in common areas like restrooms, so during the day. Classrooms will still have access to hand sanitizer, um, and, and cleaning wipes and all of that will still be, that's, that's already on the order, will be in classrooms. We will continue to work on our HVAC system, that's part of our ESTRA funding. So our facilities will make sure that we have good air quality in our, in our classrooms. Um, and then the mask breaks. We will ask that kids get mask breaks. I don't think a student should wear a mask for six hours either. Um, and so that is why, you know, going outdoors, um, and, and there are options, um, even walking up. Like last year, last year it was when you pulled up on the campus, no, that is not the case in cars. That will not be, we will not be mandating that when you're in cars with your parents. We will not be doing the screening when you get out of the car. We need it to be the system of, you know yourself and your children, if they're having symptoms, we trust our parents, we'll keep them home. Um, we are not gonna get out and ask 25 questions and make them go through all this stuff and, and none of that. Um, but we know that people will not send their students to school, we will, we know that parents, if a child is not doing well, they'll keep them at home, so we're not gonna do all that. You don't have to wear a mask in the car line. You don't even have to mask when you get out of the car because you are not indoors. It is when you walk into a school building that you would put on a mask. And when you walk outside for either recess or for PE or for any kind of after-school activity that is outdoors, you can take your mask off at that time. So it is, it is different than the application we started with last year. Last year, kids had to wear masks originally even outdoors. Um, and so that changed this summer, so, so no, so we're advancing through this process and I can promise our goal is to get them off as quickly as possible. Um, and, and, um, so I hope I answered all your questions. If there's anything I left out, I'm happy to respond.
Chair Woburn, I have one important question before we call the question.
Yes.
Um, before we mandate anything, I think it is very important to hear how this mandate will be enforced and what are consequences for non-compliance.
So first of all, we have a mask policy, and last year when people brought up the entire thing about consequences, I did not, we did not get into a big story about that because that, this is not about masking police and consequences. Um, and honestly, if that is happening around our, I, I saw an email where someone mentioned that with a child, and I did not see that happening last year at all. Our principals, we've talked a lot about masking and experience for kids. I didn't even see a lot of, and I was in schools weekly, I didn't even see a lot of even having to remind kids about the mask. And honestly, you can't touch your face, I, I mean, it, it, masks come down naturally when you're talking. And so you, you will be having to adjust it and readjust it. If a child is struggling with a mask, we are here as adults to say, okay, let's, let's do something for this child if they're struggling with a mask. This is not a, you wear your mask or you are going to, I mean, we're saying, wear your mask, everybody wear your mask, and I'm gonna tell you, that did not, that wasn't a problem last, I mean, it was not a problem for our children last year in our classrooms and even in, no matter what level. This was elementary, this was pre-k, this was middle school and this was high school. I do not know of one child, and, and I, I could be wrong because maybe there was one somewhere, but if I knew about it, something that, that was either sent home, that was referred to anything because they, they were not wearing their masks. The one thing about it now is there was such a heightened fear last year when all this happened, and we were trying to get kids back in school, and it was, I could see why at that point, people would be extremely stressed about, oh my gosh, what if? We'd have faced a lot of the what ifs. Kids are not gonna get in trouble, they're go, they, they will follow the, the instructions. I mean, that, they're gonna follow the mandate. And, and, and honestly, um, as soon as they walk out of the door, take it off, this is nine weeks, I, students are not gonna get punished. There are exceptions. Deion, we have a mask policy that provides a few exceptions. Will you please, do you have that handy that you can read them?
I do, and they're also listed in the toolkit as well as far as exceptions for mask wearing, but they are some of the ones that we've seen. Um, so you would not be required to wear a mask while you're alone in your car. Um, there was already exemption for wearing, not wearing a mask when you're alone in your office with the door closed. Um, if you have some sort of medical behavioral condition or disability that prohibits your ability to wear a mask, you would be exempted from that requirement. If you're actively eating or drinking, if you're seeking to communicate with someone who's hearing impaired, you can remove, remove your mask temporarily so your mouth is visible. Um, if you're giving a speech or broadcast to an audience, um, working from home or in a personal vehicle, temporarily removing your face covering to secure government or medical services for identification purposes. Um, if you would be at risk for, um, some other medical condition by wearing a mask, um, if you would be in violation of any local, state or federal regulations for workplace safety guidelines by wearing a mask, that's exemption. Um, if it impedes your visibility or your ability to operate a vehicle or other large equipment, that would be an exemption. Um, or if you are, or to kind of catch all is if there, if you're unable to safely put your mask on a child's face because of their age or, or other condition.
Deion, quick question. So because Board Member Jones asked her earlier question about, because one, one of the first exemptions you said was if someone had their, if they were in their office and they had their door closed, but Board Member Jones asked a question around that, and that we wanna be consistent, and I think in the superintendent's motion, or the superintendent's recommendation, is it your intention that, that the recommendation include, or is that an exception that's in our policy currently? So if, if we adopt this recommendation, then that would be an exception because I think that, then Board Member Jones' question about whether or not we're being consistent, if that's an exception, then you gonna play, and I'll make a statement?
So the exception about, um, wearing a mask, not having to wear a mask when you're alone in your office was briefly a part of the DHHS guidelines, um, as a time when you're not required to wear a mask. The other exceptions I've referenced are in the AR, and, you know, obviously depending upon the vote tonight, that AR can be amended or updated and revised as necessary, but the other exceptions I referenced are in our AR.
Thank you.
All in favor of the, uh, motion, please raise your hand. All opposed, please raise your hand. Okay, the motion carries.
What about, just for the record, can we ask for Ms. Calvert-Hayes and Ms. Parker just to be sure what they voted?
I think Board Member Parker raised her hand for the motion, is that correct? Board Member Parker?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, and Board Member Calvert-Hayes did not raise her hand for the motion, she opposed. Okay, you, you have it now? Okay, thank you. The motion carries. Um, the next item is that we have to go into closed session for tonight and, um, we appreciate you all coming, um, tonight and again, we, we love you, we love the children. Um, thank you, um, tonight for your participation. Um, is there a motion to go into closed?
Some...
Okay, let it be known by I for approval. Thank you. We are now in closed session.
Thank you for joining us on Your School Channel, Cable 2.